And if you'll stand and join with me in pledging allegiance to the flag of our country, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you bow with me in prayer, please? Our Father, who art in heaven, we do thank you for our community and our town. We just want to thank you for the servants that have served in the 62nd group and council, and we just want to thank you for their sacrifice. We thank you for their wisdom. Thank you for working with them and through them to better our community. We just ask that you bless them now as they go their separate ways and do other things for this community. We ask too now, Father, that you'll be with the new group, the 63rd group that comes in. We just ask that you give them wisdom that only comes from above in ministering and taking care of this community and making this community even better. We thank you for their servants. We thank you for their sacrifice and for their love for their community. We do pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Guthrie Public Works Authority Meeting is called to order. Item number two, Community Announcements and Recognition. I have none. On the consent agenda, council, I need a motion and a second for a vote for items A and B.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Council, cast your vote.
I think she was delayed.
Yeah, thanks, Kim. Show us the vote.
[laughing]
It's unanimous for who's here. Thank you very much. Item four, we are adjourned. The 62nd City Council meeting is called to order. On the consent agenda, items A through E, council, I need a motion and a second for a vote.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Council, cast your votes. Show us the vote. And it's unanimous. Number three, recognition of service.
We could all go down at the same time.
It's up to you. You got them in order?
No.
All right. They're in order?
They're in order. I'm Cheryl.
So payday?
Yeah. It's payday, folks.
It's payday.
The eagle gets it.
As some of you may or may not know, this mayor and city council serves this community for a dollar a year. They sacrifice a great deal of time. They sacrifice a great deal of evenings to phone calls, and they do quite a bit for our community, and we have been honored and privileged to serve the 62nd City Council. So without further ado, Cheryl Paget has served us from May of 2014 to currently and was re-elected. If you'll come right down, Cheryl, and we framed your dollar. If you want the dollar, you're going to have to break into it and get your dollar. And you're welcome to say any comments that you may like. Or not. Or not. Well, we can save them for later if you like.
Thank you for electing me to serve this position. I really appreciate the dollar.
Thank you. Jeff Taylor also served us from May 2014 to April 2015, and he will remain on the 63rd City Council. Don't spend it in too many places. Thank you. If you would like any, say any words you may.
No, no.
Thank you.
This is our taxes? IRS?
Trey Ayers also has completed his term, and he is not with us this evening. Mayor Mark Spradlin, for this whole year, you also receive $1. And as most will say, usually the mayor is the one that takes most of the phone calls and receives most of the emails and gets a lot of the communication in town. And so, Mayor, for all your hard work, you have $1 and your picture, in case you forget what you look like. Thank you.
Did you get the dollar? Okay.
Good. And Vice Mayor John Wood, for serving the citizens of Guthrie as a member of the 62nd City Council, we thank you for your service, and you too have your picture and a dollar on behalf of city staff. There we go. Thank you very much. Clarice Riendo was not able to be with us, but she will also get her dollar. We probably won't mail them, but they, you know, we'll have to get those to those individuals. And Zee. Zee Thomas, thank you for your service the past year. At times, I wanted to cut this in half for you, but no, I'm just kidding. I wouldn't. Thank you very much. Thank you. On behalf of city staff, we do with sincere thanks. Thank you for your time, your efforts. I know that the past year has not always been the easiest of decisions, and you with shining colors and professionalism have gone through the 62nd City Council. Thank you for your service.
Item number four, for the last time, the 62nd City Council is adjourned.
Thank you. And Judge Hood, if you would come before us, and all individuals that will be serving on the 63rd City Council, if you will judge, how would you like to do that lineup?
Over here.
Okay. And that's all individuals that are new or existing? It's just new taking of the oath? Thank you.
If you all can kind of gather over there so the camera can see you easily.
I'll now administer the oath. I state your name.
I, Stephen Gettling.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend
Support, obey, and defend.
the Constitution of the United States
Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma
and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
and will discharge the duties
and will discharge the duties.
of my office with fidelity
of my office with fidelity.
that I have not paid or contributed
that I have not paid or contributed.
either directly or indirectly
either directly or indirectly.
any money or other valuable thing
any money or other valuable thing.
to procure my nomination or election or appointment
to procure my nomination or election or appointment.
except for necessary and proper expenses
except for necessary and proper expenses.
expressly authorized by law
expressly authorized by law.
that I have not knowingly violated
that I have not knowingly violated.
any election law of the state
any election law of the state.
or procured it to be done
or procured it to be done.
by others in my behalf
by others in my behalf.
that I will not knowingly receive
that I will not knowingly receive.
directly or indirectly
directly or indirectly.
any money or other valuable thing
any money or other valuable thing.
for the performance or nonperformance of any act
for the performance or nonperformance of any act.
or duty pertaining to my office
or duty pertaining to my office.
other than the compensation allowed by law
other than the compensation allowed by law.
and I further swear or affirm
and I further swear or affirm.
that I will not receive, use, or travel
that I will not receive, use, or travel.
upon any free pass
upon any free pass.
or on free transportation
or on free transportation.
during my term of office.
during my term of office.
Congratulations.
So your name tags are located somewhere? At this time, there was a resolution passed in 2012 that requires a council member to sign a code of ethics every year, and in an effort to do that, we will pass that down the row so each of y'all can sign. And I know that Councilmember Thomas was instrumental in creating the code of ethics for the -- it's actually for all city council and board members, and we'll have all of our boards sign it as well. Councilmember Thomas, if you have any comments about the resolution that was passed in 2000 -- did I say 12, and I meant 2009? If I said 12, I apologize.
It was 2009, but it's pretty in-depth, but, you know, it's something where you should take and look at every year and renew that familiarity with that. And consider updating it if there's something wrong with it. And I think that the only thing I can think of that we didn't include in 2009 is the social media piece that we might want to consider in the future, putting something in there about our comments on social media.
Thank you. And those will be passed down. If you can sign those. Are these to be passed? Okay, thank you. You should have one that's an individual signature page at your desk. The one that we are passing down is to be framed and displayed at City Hall. And Mayor, that is all we have for the swearing.
Okay, all right. Well, I officially declare our 63rd edition of Guthrie City Council in order, and the agenda which was posted, we will be following. I would like, I should, I need to say one thing, though. I think the first thing, as the incoming mayor, I would like to echo Serena's comments about the individuals that have served and are going off our council. Tremendous effort for one thing, and that's Guthrie, America. People that gave an awful lot of time, Clarice, Mark, Trey, gave an awful lot of their time over a number of years to make Guthrie better. And actually, my wife was kind of excited because she said they don't even take out tax on the $1. But for $1, these men and women have dedicated an awful significant portion of their life over the course of the last few years for us. And I think that's tremendous. And I would like to personally thank them and on behalf of the council and the citizens of Guthrie, thank them again for their wonderful contributions over the years. Now, back to the agenda. Community announcements, recognition. We do have some proclamations, but before that, we have an individual that has requested -- oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. It's okay. Yeah.
Let me go back.
Sure. It's exciting.
Let me go back.
We forgive. We're human, right?
That's it.
Amen.
Okay, so Evelyn, this is the first mistake that I have made as mayor, as you told me. Yes. We need to convene the Guthrie Public Works Authority Meeting of May 5th. Called to order. There is no agenda items, so we are adjourned. That was the fastest meeting of the Guthrie Public Works Authority that we've ever had. Now, I would like to call to order the 63rd edition of the Guthrie City Council and community announcements and recognition. We have one request for a community announcement. Barry Cogburn, would you like to make your announcement, please?
I would like to congratulate our new council members. I didn't come for that. I came because I heard there was free cookies and punch. While I was here, I would like to urge the council and others watching on TV, as everybody knows, we have our school bond issue coming up. I attended the meeting last night held by the Guthrie Public Schools, their info session, if you would. I was very disappointed in the lack of people that attended that. I think maybe that's part of our problem. I don't know. But I'm convinced that, well, let me back up. Myself and my wife are both graduates of the Guthrie Public School System. All three of my kids are graduates of the Guthrie Public School System. And now my grandson is in the Guthrie Public School System. My wife was PTA involved all those years, and I as much as I could. We know the Guthrie Public School System. And our Guthrie Public School System has become unacceptable. We have to fix it as a community. It is reaching critical mass with our facilities, and thank goodness we have the leadership we have at the school system now. They're doing the best they can with what they've got, and what they've got is basically nothing. I mean, we haven't had a bond on the books for several years now. We're the only five and 6A school -- I had no idea what this meeting was last night. The only five and 5A or 6A school without a bond to support our schools. And as you may or may not know, we have other developments and properties in other cities, and our city is not, it is not a good public relations campaign for us when I go elsewhere. And it's a win-win-win. Our goal, our responsibility as citizens of this community and our school system is to provide our kids the best education we can with what we got. That's the main purpose of that. If we do improve our school system, that will help our whole community in so many ways. I mean, it's economics 101. It's as fundamental as it gets. If you're in a small community around a metropolitan area, the driving economic development factor is the school. I mean, it's basic stuff, and we would benefit from that. The property values would benefit mainly for our kids. So anyway, I encourage you as leaders of our community, we really need some leadership right now. Mr. Simpson and his crew, they need help. Our community needs this, and we need our leaders to please lead. And I would urge you, there's another meeting on Thursday at the Lazy E where you can go hear all the facts and info. I went there with an open mind, and boy, did it get opened. I mean, we've got a lot of issues. So anyway, thank you for your time. Congratulations, and I'll be out there with the cookies and punch if you need me.
Thank you, Mr. Cogburn. We now have two proclamations that I will read from the podium over here. The first proclamation reads, "Whereas community action agencies were created when the Economic Opportunity Act of 1964 was signed into law, and whereas the community action agencies have 51 years of history of promoting self-sufficiency for those with limited income, and whereas community action agencies have made an essential contribution to individuals and families in Oklahoma by providing them with innovative and cost-effective programs, and whereas community action agencies are needed as major participants in the reform of the welfare system as we know it, and whereas welfare reform in Oklahoma has benefited from the state's partnership with community action agencies, and whereas the limited income continued to need opportunities to improve their lives and their living conditions, thus ensuring that all citizens are able to live in dignity, and whereas Oklahoma and the entire United States must continue to wage war on poverty by providing support and opportunities for all citizens in need of assistance. Now therefore, I, Stephen Gettling, Mayor of the City of Guthrie, do hereby declare May 2015 as Community Action Month in Guthrie, Oklahoma, in recognition of the hard work and dedication of Guthrie's Oklahoma Community Action Agencies. Sign on the 5th day of May." Can anybody take a picture? Chris, can you take a picture of us? One more proclamation. Whereas May 16, 2015, is the 5th Kids to Park Day organized and launched by the National Park Trust, and whereas Kids to Park Day empowers kids and encourages family to get outdoors and visit America's parks, and whereas it is important to introduce this new generation to our nation's parks because of the decline in park attendance over the last decades, and whereas we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat the issues of childhood, obesity, diabetes, hypertension, and hypercholesterolem, and whereas Kids to Parks Day is open to all children and adults across the country to encourage a large and diverse group of participants, and whereas Kids to Park Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and outdoors, now therefore, I, Stephen Gettling, Mayor of the City of Guthrie, do hereby proclaim to participate in Kids to Parks Day and urge residents of the City of Guthrie to make time on May 16, 2015, to take the children of your lives to a neighborhood state or national park dated 5th of May 2015. National Kids to Park Day. Take your kids to park.
Thanks, Jane.
Another park board member?
Yes.
Okay. Get your kids to the park. Thank you. Picture? Sure. Right here. Thank you. All right. We have another community announcement. Patricia? Okay.
I have to go to that.
Any announcement?
Yes.
Just in relation to the oil drilling thing.
And if you would --
I'd like to refer to anybody else who's here who'd like to say something.
Okay. If you'd just go to the podium and give us your, state your name and your comment, please.
I'd be glad to. I in no way intended to be speaker for anyone other than myself, but I first of all want to thank the mayor and the city council for the time for public service. Having spent my whole life in public service, I realize that it takes money to run a city. It takes money to run a school. I know that that's important, but I ask you to consider the significance whenever it comes to approving this drilling permit inside the city, and it's so near a public park, which you just encouraged people to take their children to, for a number of reasons. Part of it, I know, and I'm afraid that this whole thing is kind of a moot point. It seems to me now with House Bill 809 and what's happening, and with the fact that there was already something done on the consent agenda that dealt with this to begin with, that perhaps I'm late. But there are some concerns I have. One is, as a person who has spent my whole life teaching Oklahoma history, history and in public schools, I'm concerned about the buildings that we have been left and legacy in Guthrie. They're beautiful buildings. They're architecturally significant. They're historically significant, and they're getting rocked each and every day by earthquakes. And they're not built to withstand that. Our homes are not built to withstand that. And while I know that in free enterprise, people have a right to make a living, I'm not sure that the rights of the people who own their homes should be ignored either. And I know that this particular well, Mayor Spradlin said was a straight-down drill well or whatever, but I have concerns about the proximity to a park. I have concerns about the traffic where children and parents are concerned. I have concerns about the wear and tear on the bridges, on the roads, and so forth of that equipment. I have concerns about where that water will come from in a drought-stricken area where we've been so close to rationing so many times and so many areas have been. Where will that drilling company get the water that it is going to be using? Where will they be disposing of that wastewater? And even if it's not right in the Guthrie area, if you go a few miles out, you know, the Oklahoma Geological Society has determined that that water waste disposal is indeed a part of the problem. I just hope that you will stop, and we may not be able to do anything about it, even if every person in here were concerned. And I know the city needs money to operate, but I think it sends a really, really bad message when we put an oil well right by a public park in a city that is the most historically significant city in the state, and I would ask you, please don't do that. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Bowman. Under the consent agenda, we have three items, and I would entertain a motion and a second to approve those three items listed on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second? Is there any discussion? All right. Submit your vote. Let's see what the votes say. It's a unanimous approval of the three items, A, B, and C on the consent agenda. Agenda item number seven, discussion and possible action to request issuing a permit for oil and gas well drilling.
I move to table item seven for further review for the new members of council so that we have a chance to get up to speed, see what's going on with the permit, and at least for two weeks until the next council.
A second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there further discussion?
This has been in the public for long enough. I don't know why you need to table it, honestly.
There's other things that I want to look into on the permit to see what's there. I know it's been looked at, but being new on the council, I want to take a look at it for at least another, for have a little extra time to look at now that I'm privy to all the paperwork and what's there, so.
Any other discussion items? Okay, we have a move, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. It's, the motion to table is approved by a vote of four to three. Item number eight.
He, we need to wait for Ed to recuse himself. Oh, Kim, is your door open? Kim, is your door open and unlocked?
We have a, item number eight, to amend zoning ordinance for a particular, two tracts of property located on Prairie Grove Road.
I'd be happy to give a summary.
Would you give us?
Sure. Be happy to give a summary, and one of the reasons that Councilmember Ed Wood, he had to recuse himself, he served on the planning department, on the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission makes a recommendation to the city council, therefore, he must recuse himself from the vote if he chooses to vote. If he was to stay in the room, that would be an abstention of the vote, which actually counts as a no vote under statutes. And so therefore, if you're wondering why someone ran out of the room, that would be why. Guthrie Planning Commission met on April 9 to hear an application to rezone a property located adjacent to 724 East Prairie Grove Road. The applicant filed an application, went before the Planning Commission. It's currently zoned at A1. The request was made for the property to be rezoned to a C2 in an effort to provide customers the opportunity for RV and boat storage. Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend to city council the rezoning of A1 to C2. There was a neighbor adjacent to the south that was present at the Planning Commission and mentioned that he had no concern with the rezoning. The recommendation from the Planning Commission is to approve ordinance 3270, rezoning the property located adjacent to 724 East Prairie Grove from an A1 to a C2.
Do I hear a motion and a second to approve?
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion?
There won't be any trouble with the airport, will there?
We heard none with airport violation. Yes.
I know we had to clean all that area out. That's the reason why I was asking.
Yes, we heard none.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second to approve this amendment. Please cast your vote. Show the vote. It's a unanimous, those that are here, and we have, of course, one individual had to recuse himself, so it's a unanimous approval of that amendment. Request for special use permit in the operation of business adjacent to the same location that we previously talked about on 724 East Prairie Grove Road.
And at this time, if there was any, there were individuals notified of the surrounding
And we have, of course, one individual had to recuse himself, so it's unanimous approval of that amendment. Request for special use permit in the operation of business adjacent to the same location that we previously talked about on 724 East Prairie Grove Road.
And at this time, if there was any, there were individuals notified of the surrounding property, letters were sent out, and if there is anyone here to be heard on the topic, this is the time to do so as the, it opens a public hearing.
Any public response to that?
Seeing none, this is in accordance to the ordinance in an effort for a special permit to be issued to allow the storage unit business. The planning commission also voted unanimously to recommend staff does, recommend the approval of special use permit to be issued for the operation of a storage unit business adjacent to 724 East Prairie Grove Road.
Okay. Entertain a motion and a second to approve this.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay. Cast your votes. Unanimous approval of this, this action for all those individuals that are in attendance. Can I ask Ed to come back in? Item number 10, discussion of an agreement with the YMCA for the management of the municipal swimming pool.
This item, we have, we've had a longstanding, successful relationship with the YMCA that operates the city pool. They do provide the lifeguards, they, they run the operations, and there is the agreement that is attached. We did notice one small typo on the second page of the agreement. If you can see where it says two chlorine caustic soda test kits, et cetera, two, and then it says five day minimum, it means two tests in a five day minimum, which they've been in accordance with, but I just want to clarify that, and we'll clean that up on the contract. One thing that they have willingly done, and I'll say that last year, one of our elected officials actually paid out of his pocket to provide the community a free swim day, and we have asked the YMCA for the second year in a row to open for the 4th of July for our community. Typically, all YMCA pools in the state of Oklahoma are closed on 4th of July, and ours have graciously opened up, and of course, they would accept donations from any elected official to keep it open free to the, to the boys and girls and families that like to go on 4th of July. The city continues a very wonderful partnership with the YMCA in the operations of our pool, and staff recommends the approval of the 2015 pool use agreement with the YMCA.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? Cast your votes. Unanimous approval of the agreement with the YMCA for the management of the municipal swimming pool. Item number 11, the election of the vice mayor. Every two years, we have the opportunity to elect a vice mayor, individual that would, would act as the mayor in the absence of the mayor, and so the council has the opportunity to select an individual of its, of its choosing to be the vice mayor. I have, I have talked to the members of the, of the council, and I would, I would make a recommendation that John Wood is the, is the vice mayor for the next two years.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? Cast your votes. Okay, let's see what they say. Okay, unanimous that John Wood will accept the vice mayor role for the next two years. Item number 12, the appointment of one council member to the convention and visitor bureau board, creating a positive business environment in our community for our continued growth. And it's, it's one that I think is extremely important, where you're looking for an individual on the council to, to be the conduit between the council, in addition to Cheryl, to be the conduit between the CBB and, and the council. I know that there's a lot of interest in this, in this position, and I will tell you that I am interested in this, this role. I think it's a critical role, and I would, I can't nominate myself, but I am extremely interested in this, in this role. I, I nominate the new mayor, Steve Ghentling, as our appointment to the CBB.
Hold on, he's already an ex officio on there, but as the position of mayor, he's ex officio on every committee, is he not true?
It's not specified, it's not explicit in this ordinance that was passed. It's not explicit, because it says mayor or city council, so just to clarify the ordinance, I don't think it's explicit. Mayor's always welcome to all meetings.
That's my point.
But I think as the designated ex officio, he, he could be.
We have, we have a motion, I don't think we had a.
Second.
What was the second?
What was the second?
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. Let's see what they say. Okay. Thank you very much for that honor. Honor. Let's see. Item number 13, mayor's nomination, my nomination for a member of this council to be on the ACOG, the Association of Central Oklahoma Government Board. It's, I think there's over 20 cities, towns, and county governments that are represented in this ACOG group, and I think it's very important. It's, it's a role that obviously we need to continue to be a part of. I think it's important that we have a, a significant representative, representation there. It does meet in Oklahoma City, it's a little bit of a challenge for, for some of the individuals on the board, and, but I, I think it's a very, very important role. John Wood has, has been in that role for the last, last.
Four years.
Two or four years.
Four.
In addition, some of the specific things that they, that they get involved with are some of the transportation issues, dealing with the water, a huge resource that's going to become more important in our future, as well as dealing with the 9/11, the emergency responses, again, within, within this whole region, and looking at common, common issues and trying to come up with, with solutions to those, of those issues in a collaborative way. So I think it's very, very important, and I would, I would like to nominate Z Thomas as our representative on that, on that very important role, and, and I would, I would be willing to be the alternate if, if somebody would like to make that, that motion and, and second.
Our motion.
Second.
Further discussion? Cast your vote. Let's see what they say. Unanimous. Congratulations, Z. Finance committee, there are two significant committees of the council, finance and streets. Item number 14 deals with the replacement of Trey Ayers on the, on the finance committee. I, I think it's very, very important that we have at least one, one member from every ward, each of the three wards represented on, on the finance committee, and at the present time, John Wood and Cheryl Paget are the two members. Trey is, is being replaced, and I would like to nominate Brian Bothroyd as the third member representing, again, the second ward to complete all three wards being represented on the finance committee.
So moved. Second.
Further discussion? Cast your vote. Let's show the vote. Okay. Unanimous, Brian Bothroyd will, will join John Woods and Cheryl Paget on the finance committee. Streets committee, my same philosophy applies, I think it's important that all wards are represented here. Clarice is going off of that, off of that role, and Jeff Taylor, Z Thomas are presently on that, on the streets committee. I would nominate Ed Wood as filling that out, filling the rest of the streets committee, and therefore, again, having one representative from each of the wards on the streets committee.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous, Ed Wood is on the streets committee. Item number 16, you have to, we would like to have a council member on the historic preservation committee. I think this nomination is rather obvious since the nominee has been a member of the historic preservation commission, but because he's now a member of this council, that he moved from that, that role as a, as a general member. So I would like to nominate Ed Wood as, as our council member on the historic preservation commission.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Place your votes. Unanimous that Ed Wood is our council member on the historic preservation committee. The, item number 17, the, a member from the Logan County Historical Society onto the historical preservation, there was a vacancy, or is a vacancy that was created. We have one nomination, Andy, or Amy Locke, and she's very, very interested, she has some excellent background in historical, historical preservation, and I would submit her name as the, as the member to the historical preservation.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote.
I'll vote, Stran.
Let's take a look at them. Okay, unanimous. The planning commission. We didn't, we didn't really get. Okay. We do not have an official nomination at that, at this point. I would like to defer that, that nomination for two weeks till the next, next council meeting, until we make sure that we've got a, a formal application for this, this role.
You can say, take no action.
Oh.
You don't have to.
I've been consulted, though, I can say, take no action.
Sure.
I'd like to take no action on this particular item. Number two. Library board, number nine, number 19, member on the library board, I've talked to the library staff, we do have a, have a nominee, Nikki Kessler, she is, has been a volunteer at, at the library, she's very, very much involved. Actually, there's the, the library staff kind of recruited her, her interest, and I, so I would like to nominate Nikki Kessler as the, as a new member of the library board. Is there a motion and a second? Is it?
There's, there was an existing one in your packet, Nikki Kessler. The one that was placed in your hands today would have been an application that came in after the agenda packet was prepared, and so the one in your packet is Nikki Kessler. K E S L E R.
So moved.
We have.
You have a motion.
We have a, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion to clarify?
Did you get a chance to look at this other one?
I, I did. I did. And also very qualified.
Very qualified.
Very qualified. Yep. Anyway, any other discussions? Okay. Submit your vote. Unanimous that Nikki Kessler is a member of the library board. Item number 20, Guthrie Planning Commission, very, very, again, very important commission and board, as, as all of these are. We are, we're pretty fortunate that we've got two excellent candidates. I would like to nominate Ed French, who is a longtime resident, is a builder, contractor, has been civic, significantly engaged in this community in a number of roles, both in the council and in various boards and commissions over the years. I'd like to submit Ed French for the, being the member of the Guthrie Planning Commission.
So moved. Second.
Second. Any further discussion?
Who was the other person that was, was looking at the job?
James Long.
Was there a reason why he was not considered or anything?
Yeah, considered, I considered both of them. I said, very, very good candidates, I think James has got a, also excellent resume, if you will, has been involved with the community, has an interest in the community, as does Ed. My, my nomination was, was Ed French. Any other, just, further discussion? Okay, submit your vote.
There we go.
Okay. All right. By a vote of five to two, Ed French is, is approved as the newest member of the Guthrie Planning Commission. Item number 21, city manager report.
Yesterday, the, well, now former mayor made a proclamation to name Freddie Schultz Day, and I know Channels 59 and 25 will be airing that story today, and our local media has also been covering this story, and Freddie is an individual that served for the airport for some time as a city, is a city employee, and now he's in the parks department, and Justin Hyde, as the airport manager, and him became friends and were chatting, and Justin recognized that he was a 50-year, 50 years ago, on May 4th, he, he signed up for the military, and he served two tours in Vietnam, and we recognized his service. Mayor Steve Ghentling was there, and it was a very moving experience. Justin Hyde had realized that this gentleman had lost all of his medals and all of his awards, and presented him some of the most beautiful, beautiful items, a flag, his awards, his medals, a picture of him when he enlisted. Don't get on Justin's bad side, he will find pictures of you from 1968, but it was a beautiful day, and Freddie's not one for much of, of words, and we didn't, he didn't want to be recognized here per se at city council, so we had a private affair yesterday here at city hall where his colleagues were able to thank him for his service to the country and his continued service to the community, so I wanted you all to know that we recognize May 4th, 2015, as Freddie Schultz Day, and that was a, a very moving experience. Just a rundown on some items going, if you were thinking about taking your kids to the park on, on May 16th, another item you could do is go to see Spot Run, recognizing and honoring an individual from our community, and that's on May 16th. We also have Shrek the Musical is running at the award-winning Pollard Theater until May 23rd. We also have Poker Night and Silent Auction for Logan County Relay for Life, which will be May 16th at 7:00. May 16th could be a pretty full day, if you really wanted it to be. And I want to echo Barry Cogburn's date and time for a public forum upcoming for the Guthrie Public School Bond Election is Thursday night at the Cantina inside La-Z-ee Arena. The forum is sponsored by the Logan County Economic Development Council, and it will begin at 7:00, 7:00 PM. I don't want to speak too much about the Blue Jay baseball, I know there might be someone else that might be interested in those comments, but they are facing Noble in the second round of the regional tournament being played in town, and I believe they started at 6:30 this evening, is that?
Right about.
And it was raining today, if anybody didn't notice, I apparently did not, and so that was rained out, and I'm sure that it will be rescheduled. Thank you, Chris.
Really?
Be sure to tip your waitress, that's all I have, thank you.
And then you pass it to whoever you like.
Very good. Comments from members of the city council? Z, want to start with you?
Well, we, we just finished a really busy weekend, and the community should be really proud of themselves for everything that was going on, that was, that was a really, really busy weekend, so that was something to be proud of and to look forward to, because I think we'll see some of those kinds of things at Queen of the Prairie and that kind of stuff going again. Other things, I'm looking forward to working with the 63rd Council here, and, you know, we kind of went over that code of ethics really quick, you should keep a copy of that and look through it, because it's fairly important stuff, and I just urge you to actually read it later, but, and we need to consider whether we want to add anything about social media and that, so.
It's an excellent piece already, and I think we'll be taking it under advisement, maybe at the retreat to include the social media aspect.
Which is another topic that we need to retreat to get over a lot of this stuff.
Yep. Great job. Great job. Brian?
Yeah, I want to just take a quick opportunity to thank everyone that had voted for me, and, and those that couldn't. I had a lot of support on both sides of, of the fence there. I plan on doing exactly what I said, and focusing on our future as Guthrie. That's the plan, and I, and again, I'll echo Barry's same speech that he had up here. I did go to the first one as well, and I urge everyone to, to go to those meetings, there's only one more. I think John went to the first one, and some others did also, but it is eye-opening. I think John went to the first one, and some others did also, but it is eye-opening, and that's part of the focus on our future, that's what we gotta, we gotta get done, so.
John?
I just, I want to say thanks to Mark, Trey, and Clarice for serving. I've served with Mark for two years, for Trey for six, six years, he was on for eight, but we're on the same time for six, and so that's a long time, it's a long time to be up here. And I want to thank Ed and Brian and Steve for jumping in here and serving as new voices for our city, so I appreciate you guys doing that for a whole dollar a year, making the big bucks, so. Also, a couple more things, I want to thank the council for having confidence in me to serve another two years as Vice Mayor, so I appreciate that, appreciate your support. A couple community things, you know, go to, Shrek is, is out there at the Pollard, it's been mentioned before, and my wife and I are going to go to the week, I think it's the weekend after next, so that's how you, you know, that's an example of supporting the community. So, you know, shop in town, as well as go to theaters in town, right? So, okay, and the last one, just go vote next week, right? I mean, that's, it's an important vote, I just wrote a column on it, so if you want to know more about it, I wrote about it, and why I think that whole process is important. I know we're not supposed to say a whole lot up here, but I do think that, please go out there and look at the future of Guthrie, it does make a difference. Thank you.
Ed?
Yes, thank you very much, and thank you all for allowing me this opportunity to be here tonight. My road here was a little easier than my other fellows on the commission, or...
Council.
It's council, yes, I'm still in the commission mode, I guess, but thank you for that, doesn't matter, and it doesn't diminish the fact that I will be working as hard as anybody to help the city of Guthrie and help the constituents of my ward, but mainly everybody in town. Also echoing everybody's sentiment, we must get out and pass this bond, this is a good thing for our children and for our city and for our community, it will help us all grow economically. Thank you all for allowing me to be here, I look forward to working with everybody on this board, and it's going to be a good time, I think, for all of us, thank you.
Jeff?
I too welcome all you, the new guys in, will be exciting, will be fun, will be some challenges, and that's the way it's supposed to be. We all have seven, seven different votes or opinions, and that's good, too. And I'll echo what Barry said as well, we need, this is something that doesn't just affect, you know, the quality of life, it affects everything, and I've been to school, I'm a graduate, I think Cheryl's a graduate from there.
Not exactly, but sort of.
Sort of, but anyway, several up here are graduates, and we've got to do something. You know, I echo that, I mean, I hope everybody gets out and votes, it is next Tuesday, I think you can vote Thursday, Friday...
That's right.
And then, is it Saturday?
I think just Thursday and Friday.
Thursday, Friday, okay, so if you want to go early and vote, you can vote Thursday and Friday, but...
Thursday or Friday, I hope.
Yeah, Thursday, Friday. Thank you, Z, I appreciate it.
Early and often.
It's not Chicago. Vote early, early, often, yeah. And the dead vote there, well, so...
Ethics, ethics, yes.
And I guess both, are both games rained out tonight, I guess? Are they trying to play? I know a while ago, the lights rolled when I was coming into town.
Yeah, the play's tomorrow, 4:30, Guthrie's 7:00.
Guthrie's 7:00, okay, there you go, 4:30 and Guthrie's 7:00, so go Blue Jays. That's it.
There you have it, Cheryl?
Okay. I want to thank Dawn for continuing to serve week after week after week after week as our chaplain, I appreciate that, you're always here, thank you, Dawn. And everybody's preceded me with really good things and thank yous and all that stuff, but I, I do appreciate everyone that votes. It doesn't matter who you vote for, it matters that you vote, and that you care, and that you have taken the time to go and express your opinion, that's very important. I certainly hope everybody votes yes for the school bond, I have grandchildren in school, and they are our future. We will not be here, the city will not be here if we do not support that, we need it for all of us, but especially our children. I appreciate having been put in this position, I appreciate those that did elect me, and I will continue to serve in the capacity that I've been elected to do, thank you all, and God bless.
Can I mention one thing real quick? I've had, I totally forgot to say this, as some people have asked, Ed and I are not related in any way, shape, or form, but he's just had the good fortune of having an awesome last name.
Yes, thank you.
So...
Now we, our whole forest here.
Yeah, go, go figure, go figure. I would just like to make a couple comments, one is, is delinquent. 89er celebration was a significant success, again, this year, and much of that goes to members of, of this city that make things happen behind the scenes for 89ers. Maxine Pruitt, all of the police staff just do a magnificent job in keeping things organized and under control for a whole week.
Wow.
And, and I'm sure there's others, but those two come to mind. So I would like to thank all of the members of the, of the city that, that do special things during all of our activities, whether it's Queen of the Prairie, or whether, whether it's 89ers, or a host of other activities that go on in our fine community, that wouldn't happen without, without their efforts, and the things that they do above and beyond. So not only Justin's, I think Justin's shadow box was a good microcosm of what I see in the, in the service of city employees. To take somebody that has lost their medals and, and go and get new medals and put them in a wonderful shadow box, I think reflects very highly about the camaraderie that is in our, our city employees. And Serena, I salute you and all of the leaders for making that happen, because you, it's a, it's a reflection of top-down, as we all know. So thank you very much for the support specifically of, of 89ers, but generally about all of the various programs that go on, week in and week out, here in Guthrie, America. Also, I'd like to thank all of you for showing up and being a, a part of, of the City Council, part of the process, and a part of making all of us better. Last comment, unanimous on Barry, vote on the 12th, or early, if you so desire, but vote. We're adjourned.